All this being in order, would you please stand with us now for the pledge laid by Siegel ROTC?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please pause with us now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the consent agenda. Any questions? Okay, we've got a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Recognition, Siegel, six.
Our recognition of Siegel High School Junior ROTC National Championship Precision Air Rifle Marksmanship Team. We have our county ROTC Director, Colonel Housens, please take over.
Thank you, sir. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce to you the Siegel Precision Air Rifle Team. They're the national champions of all our junior ROTC. That includes Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, and Army. And at this time, I'd like to allow Master Sergeant Thurston, the Army Instructor at Siegel High School, their coach, to take over. Like a good officer, I'll leave the area.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Mr. Gill. Thank you for allowing us to honor Siegel's High School Rifle Team here today. Our team members are Richard Calvin, who is in Colorado Springs, Colorado, competing at the United States Junior Olympics, Maya Aradondo, John Carter, and Teddy Ilkoff. We recently returned from spring break as the 2010 JROTC National Precision Air Rifle Champions. This championship is the culmination of a three-tier playoff system that started in December. Siegel High School was one of two out of 205 Army JROTC programs who qualified in Seventh Brigade, which represents Tennessee, Kentucky, Ohio, Indiana, and Lower Michigan to compete at the Army JROTC Service Championship at Camp Perry, Ohio, in February. Siegel High School won the Army Service Championship with a two-day score of 4,591 points of a possible 4,800. There are over 1,645 Army JROTC programs in the United States and overseas, and we were one of four teams who qualified to represent Army JROTC at the JROTC National Championship. The Army, Navy, and Marine Corps sent their four best teams for their individual service championship to compete against one another at the JROTC National Championship. At the Nationals, Siegel set an Army record on day one by scoring 2,321 points out of possible 2,400. Siegel won the national championship with a two-day total score of 4,633 out of 4,800 points. Since the start of the national championships in 2003, Siegel was the first precision Army team to win the championship. Individual honors include Richard Calvin winning the national individual precision championship and setting a national Army record on day one by scoring 594 out of 600. Richard has also been accepted to the United States Military Academy at West Point and will be on their rifle team. Maya Aradondo won third place overall. Also this past weekend in Nashville, Siegel finished the season defending their state championship by defeating Montgomery Bell Academy and all other precision teams in the state with a score of 2,304 points out of 2,400. Thank you for your time. This concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
No, but I do have a comment. First of all, congratulations. That's pretty amazing what you were able to do. We've been fortunate at the last, I don't know, during my tenure here in seven years, to have three or four separate presentations by ROTC departments across the county. It's amazing the products you guys turn out. Take these young people who may need a little support, a little direction, and they turn, wind up being just exceptional students, you know, with high GPAs and commitment to these kind of projects and be successful. So Colonel Housens, to you, congratulations on these fine people you're putting in charge.
I'm really blessed.
Well, we are when we get these kind of results. But anyway, congratulations, guys. That's remarkable.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Burney, do you have a comment?
Yeah, she's walking away with that most impressive trophy, and I don't think the public was allowed to see it.
Hold it up so they can see it from camera.
Or the trophy to be presented so that the general public can observe this. You know, that's the fruit of their work.
What kind of, this may be a dumb question, show what I know. What kind of weapons do you use when you shoot, compete? Is it like a single shot?
Yes, sir. They're single-shot air rifles. The precision rifles that we use, the cost of them are approximately $1,600 to $3,000 apiece. They're only made in Germany. And there is another version, Sporter air rifles, and they're approximately $450 or less. They're two catapults using an air rifle.
Now, the Department of the Army, EAC Command furnishes each school the Sporter air rifle. Of course, it's not to the standard of precision. So they support the precision team through fundraisers and the boosters club.
Through our booster club, precision air rifle is the same thing they shoot at the collegiate level, which is the official sport along with small-bore air rifle. So they are shooting the same thing that the collegiates and also the Olympic shooters shoot.
Does any of you know the muzzle velocity of that weapon?
It's 600 feet per second, sir.
All right, pretty sharp.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a spotlight on education. You've heard us say that they're stepping up the difficulty in Terranova testing, and which brings us to the title of tonight's spotlight, "Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader?" Ms. Ann McCraw and Mr. Odom will review changes, enhancements, and protocols for the 2010 TCAP test with a summarization of Rutherford County's most recent ACT Explorer scores. So whenever you're ready.
Thank you. We thought today would be appropriate since we began the TCAP assessment today in elementary schools. Today is reading, tomorrow is math, then science and social studies Monday, Tuesday, next week. And the state established the sequence of that testing, okay? We want to begin, if we can, with you by talking a little bit about, Dr. Burns, you asked us sometime, how did we compare this year on the Explorer test nationally? These are national comparisons. And I think you'll see something interesting up here. Total students in the report for Rutherford County is 3,132, which basically says, "We're testing everybody that's in the eighth grade." This is an eighth-grade test. That there is the Explorer, the ACT Plan, and then the ACT Test. But as you look down through that, you see in English, Rutherford County was 15.6, and the national average is 14.2. And likewise, in math, 15.8, there's your national, 15.1, reading, 15.2 for us, 13.8 nationally, science, 17.1 nationally, 15.9, 16.1, and 14.9. That's a very, very respectable score. That's, and that's your national comparison that some ask about, given to all of our eighth-grade students, basically.
Most places around the country also test all their students?
Probably not. Tennessee, you know, the legislature purchased Explorer and Plan and ACT. So unless someone has done that, it would not necessarily be universal. So I think that's another reason I think that it makes it especially good, that when you're testing everybody, that you can still attain those scores.
When you say, though, in other states, it would be more likely to be given to the better students or the struggling students?
If you were picking some to give it to, you would probably more likely give it to the better students, I think. Argue those. In fact, that's what used to be done. Another slide, this should be of interest to you again, the light-colored one right here at the top is your national average, but I thought you might enjoy seeing three years. The dark blue is 2007, that's 2008, and that's 2009. If you look at our growth, one of the things that you like to see, that you're getting better. And I think that, again, I like to look at trends sometimes more than a single year. So that made us feel very good, to see those trends upward. Also, another thing I wanted to point out to you here, to kind of understand that, the maximum score is 25 on ACT Explorer, on Plan, the maximum's 32, and then, of course, on the ACT is 36. So I thought you might find it interesting, how many students in Rutherford County schools scored the 25? We had 99 students that made the 25, that perfect score in English, 43 in math, 49 in reading, 64 in science. This is really interesting, though, as you see the difference in students. 10 students, only 10, made 99 percentile in every area. So you see the individual strengths of students based upon that particular test and subject. We want to kind of go now to, with you, and Ann's going to talk to you some about what is TCAP and some of the rules that have been applied this year and all as we go through.
Good evening. The TCAP stands for Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program, and it's not just a single test. The test that we're doing today is TCAP achievement. But you'll see lots of times on individual schools, marquees will say, you know, TCAP's today because if you're in an elementary school, this is the one that counts for you. But TCAP actually is an umbrella program where we administer achievement tests to grades three through eight. We do writing assessments in February at grades five, eight, and 11. And then we're doing end-of-course exams this year in Algebra I, Biology, English I, English II, and U.S. History. We also are this year piloting or doing the field test for Algebra II. TCAP also has, what Mr. Odom was just talking about, the E-Pass program, which is the Explorer test for eighth grade, the Plan for 10th, and the ACT for 11th. This is just our second year of doing ACT in the schools. We did that in March, and that is an assessment that can count for college entrance for them. They get both academic assessments and some intracementeries. And if they take the ACT according to all the rules that ACT provides for us, then those scores can count for college enrollment.
We might say that for parents that may be watching this, the State of Tennessee will pay for that administration of the ACT test for all 11th graders so they do not have to pay for that themselves. It's covered as part of the testing program.
We pay for that, hopefully, for the bulk of the 11th graders to take it at school because they feel like that's a better testing setup for them. It's more familiar, they're in their home school. But if they miss that day, or if they can't, for some reason, take it on the single day that's offered in our school system, they still can use that voucher for a national test date. So Mr. Odom thought that you all might like to see, if you were smarter than a fifth grader, what we provided for you online are some fifth-grade questions. But what you have at your place is a copy of the practice test for eighth grade. So we thought you might want to look at that one privately. But this is our, a couple of fifth-grade sample questions for you.
For each of the books, this is the test that's basically for everyone. The ones on the right, and I'm going to show you some examples of difference in the test question, is the modified, the MOS test, Modified Academic Achievement Standards. And basically, 97% of your students will have to take the regular test. 1% can be a portfolio, basically, and then a 2% on the MOS. Am I correct on that? So 97% would be taking this over here. About 2%, especially its students, might be taking that one. If you test more than that, even if they pass, they'll not count for you. So, you know, you're strictly limited to that. So we're going to take a look at some of those.
While we're talking about that, he's talking about the new test. One of the things I wanted to show you all is that these are sample tests, but they're just like, I mean, the outside cover looks just like the regular test. So you see, we've got three books, three red books, but they're three different tests. This one is the regular achievement test for grade five, or the regular practice test. This is the English Simplified test, grade seven, still red. And this is the MOS test for grade four. So one of our concerns and our challenges this year when we're talking about new things in assessment is that we do have three different tests. You have to be very careful that the right student gets the right assessment. But one of the challenges for us is that even though things are color-coded, that's color-coded within limits. So we've worked really hard on, talking to our test coordinators about being sure the right kid gets the right test. And we've done that today, so it should carry on through.
One of the things that I know people that may be watching us on television and all, why do we, does the state provide a practice test for students? Why would we do that? The test questions you're going to see in a few moments are not test questions on the test, but they're styles of test questions on the similar standards. One of the things, if you really want to know what a student's learned, then you've got to remove the testing bias because you may be testing the bias to the test in addition to the content knowledge. So what we're interested in is content knowledge. So unfamiliar formats can result if students not completing these timed tests. Multiple questions, they come in sometimes charts, graphs, other things. Once the students have seen that and familiarized themselves with it, then you begin to be able to assess, did they acquire the content? You know, what's their achievement level? The state's answer is actually the one at the bottom here. And that's what they say, and it's for, it's to familiarize students, to let parents and others see what the test looks like. So let's take a look at some of those and see. Now, on the left side, each time is going to be the test for the 97% of students. The MOS test is a question on the right. This is a social studies for fifth grade. And you can see the question, which of these, I'm looking right here, which of these is a true statement about the counties listed? So you have a table of information, same question really here. Difference between the two tests, you'll notice over here, on the 97%, the majority of students, they have five different counties. Over here, it's been reduced to three. They've also rounded off the numbers a little bit for the special ed student. But in essence, they still must answer that. Anybody want to answer that question? Give it a chance? Okay, it's A and F, actually, in these two. The largest city is the most likely found in Davidson County. And you can, and the others, there's usually one outlier question that you can eliminate quite quickly, but then the other choices are some that you're just going to take a little bit of time to understand.
It's also significant that on the MOS test, there are only three choices. So also, when they're testing, they have a different answer document than, they have a different book and a different answer document, so.
Okay, here's the fifth-grade reading language arts. I actually have two different questions here. Again, this is where most of the children, you would recognize this, Dr. Burns, is Miller's Analogy, is what you take to intergraduate school sometimes. So they have dropdown, even with some of the fifth graders here, they're doing some Miller's Analogies. Assist is to help, as latch is to what? Same thing over here. Break is to fix, as ask is to, and I'll answer in just a minute if you want to try that one. Again, a lot of questions dealing with purpose, main purpose. The paragraphs are long. I did not use questions that involve paragraphs this time because we couldn't get them on one slide. What is the purpose of this sign? I thought these were really kind of interesting. Some of these are close. Persuade people to take swimming lessons, to entertain people with funny designs of a swimmer, to inform people that there are many swimmers in the water, to communicate to people to avoid swimming in the area. So sometimes, with Miller's analogies and things like this, sometimes your brighter students overanalyze it. You know, and again, practicing helps keep that from happening. But again, the answer to these, again, assist is to help, as latch is to fasten, and break is to fix, as ask is to reply. Okay, so it's slightly different. Going to move you up to sixth grade now, and I'm going to, the diagram for both, the addition for the students with disabilities, is exactly the same diagram for the other students. Again, a difference in the question. Now, you see the moon rotating. Here's your question. The question is, which moon phase will happen next? That's a, that's a science question for that one. There's your choices, four or three? You notice, avoiding eye contact. That's that giveaway from the teacher's standpoint. It's at least three teachers up here, so I know four, Mr. Gill, so. When your students avoid eye contact, you know.
If I look right at her, she won't ask me. That's wrong.
It's the new moon is the next phase. I want to, I jumped up to eighth-grade math, which is in the book that you have here. I can tell you very, very plainly that the math is the greatest change that we've seen. We talked about tests being more rigorous. These are inequalities. If you take a look up here, they have to decide which one of these, this formula is which one of these inequalities. What they've done over here in this one, if you've done a little bit of math, it's actually the same formula, but what they did is they subtracted four from each side. You know, they partially solved it. They didn't go ahead and divide by two, but they made one step in the solution, went to three, again, choices. But that's for all of your students, special ed and all included. Be expected to get that question. This used to be algebra, and I guess you can see. And there's your answers. It is the same graph, but again, there's the answer for both. Looking at this, I think this kind of shows you what I'm talking about in this. The state basically will tell us kind of how the questions are organized. For example, in sixth grade, this is sixth grade, and there's 60-something questions. You've got 18 algebra, 12 geometry, which is 30, and seven, even with data analysis, statistics, and probability. So all of those, you've got 37, you've got over half of it that's related to what you would normally see really in high school content. You look over here, and it goes up even greater, 20 algebra, 14, 34, and you go to 44 questions. Or really, these areas down through here were the ones that used to be mostly high school content. So that's, that's the new standard, the new rigor in the standard, okay?
This year also, we're doing end-of-course exams that are all brand-new, in English I, English II, algebra, and biology. U.S. History is still the same as the one we've done before. Students who are entering the ninth grade this year are required to take the test, but they're not required to pass it. Just this year, what counts is 20% of their second semester grade. So technically, they could not pass that exam, but still pass the course for the year, depending on their daily grades. Oh, we did that again.
Are there not gateway tests anymore?
Yes, there's still gateway for students, a smaller group of students. It looks like we'll be testing about 600 gateway students this time. They'll be taking that assessment online. So we still have some students who are in the gateway pipeline, and as part of that transition, they'll be testing.
But there are no more, there's no exams they have to pass to graduate from high school? Have we moved away from that?
Well, the ninth graders now don't have to do that. So students entering high school this year and coming after will not have to pass gateway. They just have to take those EOCs.
What's the state's logic in that, do you think?
I can tell you, in a percentage of the scores, once before, it was harder on than passing a gateway generally. And it'll be 20% for two years, as A and C, middle grade, 25%. So you've got a fourth of your grade tied up in that test. There's a movement, I think, both ways across the country. Some are going to gateway style, and others are going back to the test. I included one example here of a high, we're not going to go through the all-in course. The difference kind of when you get into high school, this happens to be Algebra I, you start seeing system of equations, two equations. And you're trying to decide, solving these two equations, which one of these graphs represents that? It happens to be D. But again, you can see the difficulty climbing as it goes up.
And Dr. Burns, there's the information about our gateway transition program. If they have earned credit for those gateway courses, but they didn't pass the exam, and that's still their graduation requirement, then they will take that beginning. Actually, they have a window from April 27th to May 21st to take that exam online. So we're right now in the throes of getting our labs set up in high school to administer that test and to get the information out to students who are no longer in school, who traditionally have come back to take it, that it's kind of a different ballgame for them. We do still have, probably the greatest percentage of our, of our high school students who are still bound by gateway, will take that end-of-course exam because they're just now taking, for example, English II or U.S. History. They'll take that end-of-course exam, and they'll get a met-not-met designation with regard to their graduation requirements. So they kind of, they'll get the exam grade, which counts as part of their course grade, and then they'll get that met-not-met designation.
So I'm clearing the online part. What's the, before, if they failed, they just took it again at the school?
Right. The difference, it's the same test, the difference is just that it's online now instead of pencil and paper.
And they can take it unlimited number of times, or?
Yes, sir, within the three times a year that we offer it.
That gives us some concern. One of the things that we noticed, especially if you have a student that's repeating exams, say you did not, were not successful the year before, and you find yourself taking the online version of the gateway this time, there are several steps in moving. I mean, you've got retractors and compasses, rulers, but you have to drag and put it in the place, measurement. So there's another skill totally added to going to online. And in a sense, that's what I was talking about a while ago with testing bias. So there is some testing bias being introduced, I would say, with the online version in addition to the content.
Just in terms of other assessments that Rutherford County administers, in the second grade, our students take a COGAT assessment that's just part of a cognitive ability screening test. We give ThinkLink to our first and second graders rather than standardized tests with national norms because we think we get better information from that ThinkLink. It's tied to Tennessee standards. We get almost immediate feedback. They test at various times throughout the year. And then there are also other grade levels that take ThinkLink assessments, such as algebra, and they do that as a benchmark assessment through the, you know, to monitor progress throughout the year. This year, and this is, this is kind of different this year, and there aren't a lot of people who are happy about it, but we won't get reporting, reports from our spring assessments until the fall. They're not going to set cut scores until the summer. So while we may get raw scores, or in our case, for our high school students, they'll get a score back to average in as a part of their grade. We won't know if that's proficient, advanced, approaching provision. We won't know those things until probably October. And we aren't going to get scores back for our seniors, for our high school students, prior to graduation. So this year, that's created some concern at our high schools because they're going to have to have an alternate plan. In the past, we would test Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, scan on Monday, get scores maybe Wednesday afternoon, and everybody, you know, graduation began Thursday. This year, we're not going to have those scores back. So they're going to have to have an alternate plan for those seniors who are dependent on one of these scores.
If you understand what she's saying here, to get the no child left behind proficient or not proficient, they're not going to set that until everybody is tested. What, no, there's too many questions you have to get correct to be considered proficient? How many questions did you have to get correct to be advanced? Until the whole testing thing is over, which will be set in June? I think that's it. Seven questions.
Any other questions, Mr. Blue?
I have two. Do they just do this at intermittent times through the school year? Or is there a day that they take?
The practice test, they do that differently at each school. We got those probably six weeks ago when we got them out to the schools. And I think every school developed their own plan for how they use those. But I can guarantee you that every school used them prior to get, you know, both to assess where they were with regard to the standards and to make the students more comfortable with the format. Oh, right. We have end-of-course is scheduled for the first week in May, and we don't have those yet. It's my understanding that the state is presently still shipping achievement tests to school systems because of all the snow and the bad weather. Other systems aren't testing until later. So I just talked to them late this afternoon, and we still don't have our practice test for end-of-course.
For so many years, Tennessee was accused of not having truth in advertising with our scores. Do all of these assessments pretty much make that a mute point now that we are being? Do all of these assessments pretty much make that a mute point now that we are being, uh, graded with, with students across the nation?
It's our understanding that it will be, without us knowing how the, the proficiency levels are set, you know, we don't really know that. We know that the tests assess the new standards, and that those are standards consistent with ATT's, um, you know, curriculum after for predicting post-secondary success. So, it's our understanding that that is absolutely the case, but, um, I think we probably don't have any real data to support that till we see how the cut scores are set.
Mr. Kelly?
I didn't understand the logic in why the reports were not, uh, available any earlier. Obviously, we've got the technology to do that.
There's statistical, um, procedures that have to be performed that I don't really understand on a very personal level. Mr. Odom is the math person, but I do know that until they get a certain number of test results in, and they can perform this analysis, then we can't get data back. And generally, they like for us to score early, 'cause we're a big system and we increase that number. But they've told us to expect five to seven days in terms of turnaround, where normally we got them within, uh, seventy-two hours.
What, do they do batching, or, or do they have to have a certain amount?
Let me tell you what I was told. You know, we were getting to the point, well, basically in math, the, the no child left behind cutoff was eighty-three percent for the high school algebra, eighty-six percent for elementary math, for example. Um, we're, and so that means you had that percent of your students being proficient, that or higher. And we were a little higher than Rutherford County. What, what they're telling, are telling us that when they set the cuts this time, they wanna see how the students score. But they're thinking about somewhere in the range that to set it to where forty percent of the students will not be proficient this year. So, that's, that's the point I wanna make to you. If they do that, if they follow through with that, that you're gonna see huge difference. And, and they won't know till they give a test to see how many questions you have to get to see where the forty percent would be.
The delay is not in the, in the, in the actually compiling the figures, but trying to decide what cutoff point they might have.
Kind of both. They have to have a certain number of test scores to do the statistical analysis. But then they'll have the group come and look at those scores to set the, the standards. And we are hoping that we'll have teachers involved in that standard setting. We've been invited to, um, apply, and we have, so. But I don't think they meet until June or July.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we don't have any visitors that are gonna speak, so we go on to number nine, Mr. Gill.
You ready, Mr. Clardy? We, uh, next on the agenda is the follow-up status for previous board action items. Staff will update the board on the following, uh, several of our projects. Three of, three of those are schools will be open the next fall. Whitworth, Buchanan, Middle, Oakland Middle, and Central Magnet.
Do you wanna go to number ten and come back to that? Let's go to number ten and come back to that.
We'll come back to you again. Okay, we're ready.
All right. Try, try.
Central Magnet School, uh, we have moved in there early and taken the ceiling on the bottom floor. We have it finished now after the testing is over with next week. Those children will be relocated in that room, and we'll work on another one. We've had to get a, that, uh, I think we all realize how big that still is, a huge. So, we've had to get a jump on that. You can see pictures here where we've stripped it out. Demolished it, putting in science lab, uh, and, uh, finishing up the room.
How many science lab we putting in? Six?
Um, there is, I believe there's six. And this is a picture of the finished, uh, hallway on the outside. Putting in a sound booth. McFadden School of Excellence, we are, uh, have started construction on that. They're caulking up some windows. They have taken this concrete out now. I was over there today and replaced it. They poured it this afternoon. So, uh, we're doing some regrading around the front, uh, to keep the water out.
Remind me, Mr. Clardy, was that part of the ongoing restoration of older schools?
Yes, sir, it's capital improvement.
Yeah. And I think we dedicate about six, up to six hundred fifty thousand dollars for fixing schools. We've done Laverne Primary, we've done Christian Elementary, we do some work there. There were other schools. And you know what? It's made a, it's made a big difference.
It has.
Uh, Roy Walden, I think the teachers have appreciated, the parents have appreciated, the kids have appreciated, so. Uh, matter of fact, Doc Bullen on the county commission really kinda spearheaded that, uh, indicating every time we built a new school, we ought to try to do a little something for the old schools, and it's been a good thing at it.
Yes, sir, it sure has. And, uh, McFadden, remember, because of Central Magnet, uh, School, McFadden got bumped off the budget this year to John Coleman last year. So, we, the funds that rent a capital project, we've written part of that, and once the capital project comes through and a new budget, we will fund the rest of, uh, McFadden School. Oakland Main School re-roof, we finally got that one hundred percent completed. So, we've got a new roof over there. Riverdale High School Annex. I've got Oakland and Riverdale both, but I've just got a few shots of the beginning of Riverdale, which is complete now, and then the finished shots of Oakland for time period. So, that's where they're moving the ballast off the roof. And then the Oakland, you can see that's removed there. Uh, they're putting down new roofing. On the annex, the seams are, uh, held down by the bucket with weight in it. And then you can see the finished roof on the annex. Oakland High School Special Ed Greenhouse. This is a large greenhouse. It's funded through, uh, federal money. And we're making good progress on it also. See the roof is on it now, and they started down the sides, getting, uh, the sides completed. Whitworth Buchanan School, we struggle with these middle schools because of the below-average temperatures this year. For twelve or fifteen years, we've had above-average temperatures in the winter. Been very successful. It's been a real struggle with all the rains, the freezing temperatures, the snow we had. But they are picking up. They're making good time at this point. You can see out there, we have the curb and the sidewalk seeing up to the entry of the school. Most of it is brick now. There's detection on the back around by the loading dock, and there's also, uh, all the roof has dried in. But, and they're continuing to put roofing on it now. This is now dried in. This is the, uh, interior of the gym. The, uh, main mechanical room for geothermal well. Uh, off-site sewer is going well. We acquired the last easement today. Uh, they're about fifteen hundred feet, which is about three works for getting about five hundred feet of sewer. Moving into the woods out there, the, uh, they lack one section on the site sewer, so, uh, that was a little iffy, but with the good weather, we're attacking that pretty good. You can see through the sewer here where they have it installed. I'm getting ready to bore under Highway forty-one there, and at the end of the road back there is where the main pumping station for that will be. This is just where, uh, it's been shot. You can see the school back over in the background here. Oakland Middle School is still ahead of Whitworth Buchanan. I was over there this week twice on both of those schools. And, uh, you can see just from these first three pictures, the kind of progress we're making, starting on sidewalks all the way to the next picture of the canopy being up with all sidewalks in. So, that happened in just a, uh, week's time. Continuing to put roofs on over there. Working on the manifold for the geothermal well. Uh, they're completing the masonry on the front of the building. This is one of the rooms there that is, uh, it's pretty much complete, other than dropping ceiling in and cleaning everything up and putting baseboard. Uh, the front office. Some of the science lab. And then the last thing is, there is a wall at Smyrna High School that, um, has been undercut by drainwater. And it is leaning, so we're gonna, uh, along with Mr. Sandig, review the budget when we get down to the close of this, this fiscal year and just see if we have the money left to, uh, get this with. But it's, it's gotta be done, so we're in hope that we will have money to rework that with. Have any questions?
Mr. Cherry?
Central Middle and McFadden, uh, how close are they running to budget, uh, with those projects?
Running to budget?
Sir?
How close are they running to budget?
Yes, sir. Renovation projects seem to get a little bit off sometimes.
Uh, Central Magnet is in good shape. We have on the, uh, previous budget for all the renovations we've done, such as Laverne Primary, uh, Roy Walden up there, and some other schools. We've basically set up six hundred fifty thousand in there, uh, in all those budget lines, and we end up saving money in those. Uh, McFadden, uh, at Laverne Primary, for instance, we ended up spending about four hundred and eighty thousand, and I think we'll spend that much at, uh, Roy, I mean, uh, McFadden also. So, uh, there's some items that have been added to the list over there, and we're hoping that we'll have enough money. I have hallways windows, uh, this year in my capital improvements budget, but we're thinking, uh, at later on, maybe proposing that we take sixty thousand of that money, and while we're at McFadden, do those windows. And then complete, uh, McFadden, I mean, uh, hallways next year. So, we're, we're in pretty good shape. I think we're gonna get everything pretty much done. I know it's, uh, there's some things on the list over there, such as playgrounds. Well, it's, it's been, um, I don't know if it's board policy or not, but we've always haven't contributed. Once we built the playground, we haven't contributed a lot, except for the upkeep. Most people raise, uh, schools raise money for those playgrounds. And I know they've just had a successful fundraiser and raised twelve, twenty thousand dollars. I'm not sure the exact number, but they're contributing also.
Hey, Mr. Clardy, on our, uh, I guess the first time we used metal roofs was where? Stewart's Creek?
Uh, Siegel has.
Siegel's got some. Have they, we hadn't had much trouble all out of them?
We haven't. Uh, we had a, uh, couple flashing details that we had to rework. Where we get some water in around parapet walls and things, but we have resolved that. And we, we have a Beridge metal roof on Eagleville High School that we're not having any leaks with, but we're having a lot of corrosion on it, and it was one.
At which school?
Eagleville. And we're working through that right now with Beridge, uh, Metal, try to get that resolved. But the other schools are holding up.
So, for example, when we built an Oakland or Riverdale forty years ago, thirty-eight years ago, and they put a roof on there, what's typical timeframe before you have to start doing patching and repair work, et cetera?
Metal or membrane, or?
Uh, membrane.
Ten to maybe sixteen years. So, you have to end up replacing those, and those things are.
Which is hopefully where you, where you get your savings on your metal roof in, in that, that period of time, right?
Yes, sir, over the length of the roof, which is fifty years.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Clardy.
Good job, Mr. Clardy. Ten, textbook adoption report ED five oh nine nine and textbook certificate of adoption report ED twenty-one fifty-three. School system is required to submit textbook adoption annually on forms provided by the Tennessee Department of Education. A local textbook adoption report shows newly adopted textbooks from two thousand and ten. Textbook adoption includes K through twelve, English grammar and composition, foreign world language, and English as a second language. All textbooks are on a six-year cycle. Recommend that we approve the textbook adoption report ED five zero nine nine and certificate of adoption report ED twenty-one fifty-three as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So, move.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed.
Facilities, Eagleville Baseball Field Irrigation and Backstop Improvements. Principal Holton at Eagleville High School has requested permission to upgrade the backstop, improve drainage, install irrigation inside the baseball field at Eagleville School. The improvements will be funded through private donations and funds raised by the Eagleville Baseball S- School Support Organization, program at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Recommend that you approve improvements to Eagle House, Eagleville High School Baseball Field as requested at no cost to the board.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So, move.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed.
Twelve, contract for substitute teacher services. The request or proposal for substitute teacher services were, was released to the vendors on February the second, two thousand and ten, with a submission deadline of March ninth, two thousand and ten. Five proposals were received. Three companies with comparable rates whose proposals met the terms of the RFP were selected to present to the selection committee on April the sixth, two thousand and ten. Based on the proposal rates and previous experience, the committee recommends that the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven contract for substitute teacher services be awarded to Advantage XPO, formerly Holland Employment. The members of the committee feel very strongly that Holland did not present the, that although Holland did not present the lowest rate, the level of service Holland has provided in previous years far exceeds the benefits of changing to another company, and might add, over a two million dollar contract, it was a three thousand dollar difference. It wasn't substantial. Uh, recommend that you approve the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven contract for, for providing substitute teacher services to Advantage XPO.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed.
Just a quick update for the folks that are here and watching on TV. We have a work session two nights before this board meeting, and we discussed in detail all these items, so, uh, if you wanna reference that work session on TV, you'll get a much broader base of what, uh, what we're talking about.
It may also be entertained.
Might be. Not good entertainment, just entertaining. Thirteen, tenure for certified employees. Tenure with Rutherford County School System is awarded to certified teachers who meet the following criteria. Have a degree from an approved four-year college, or to any vocational teacher who has the equivalent amount of training established and licensed by the State Board of Education. Holds a valid professional license based on training covering the subjects or grades taught. Has completed a probationary period of three school years, or not less than twenty-seven months, in the last five-year period, the last to be employed as a regular teacher. Is re-employed by the Board of Education for service after the probationary period. Recommend that you approve the list of teachers as presented for tenure with the Rutherford County School System.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So, move.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 14.
Calendar for 2011-2012. The calendar committee met on March 10th, 2010, developed and recommended a 2011-2012 school system instructional calendar. Recommend that you approve the recommended calendar for 2011-2012 as presented.
Per the recommendation, have a motion.
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Here is 15. Student discipline.
Student discipline appeal. The board has been requested to review the March 29th, 2010 decision of the disciplinary hearing authority to uphold, to uphold the expulsion of a student from Oakland High School. Student was expelled for one calendar year under the board's zero tolerance policy for assaulting a teacher. This review is pursuant to provision of Policy 6.317. Policy states the board shall review the record and shall, one, affirm the decision of the DHA, two, overturn the decision of the DHA, three, modify the decision of the DHA to a lesser penalty, except in cases of zero tolerance violations, four, grant a second hearing, which would be before the board, or five, deny request for a board hearing.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm happy to affirm the decision.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I'm going to abstain.
2010-2011, general purpose school budget working draft. In lieu of having a discussion in as an agenda item, we've set a special call meeting to discuss the budget on this Monday, this coming Monday at 5:00 at the Board of Education.
General discussion by the board. Anyone have anything to say? All minds at ease, we'll adjourn.